Have no voice but a couple of members on the school board. And yet they pay the most taxes. And I really feel that as a Sunapee resident, if we push our kids out, we're going to fall into that same category. You're right, we do have a lot of expensive houses with high taxes on the way. We're going to pay big bucks to ship our kids out, or we can pay the same amount of money to keep our kids here. And if a school choice does come in, as Justin from Little Town of Ocean says, that has the largest percent was to send their kids to Sunapee. Why? It's because we rank so high and have such a good program here. So that is one of my biggest concerns. And I'm very happy to hear that the board came up with, let's keep our kids in here. So now that we've decided, let's keep our kids in here, we need to move forward with something. And if you look at the interest rates, if you look at the amount of money, and you look at the fact that we potentially could get a grant, I don't think this is taxing, taxing people out in Sunapee. So many people will stand up and speak about their tax level and just pushing them out. Really look at what our tax level is. We are so low compared to, you know, my mom has the same size house as me in Ocean, she's paying ten grand in taxes, I'm paying fourteen eight hundred. My sister has the same house in Lebbiton, seventeen thousand dollars on taxes. They don't get, really the services that we do here in Sunapee, beaches, and you know, the community policing with, that we have, the fire department. We're in an amazing community, and I think it's driven, one of the main things driven by is that the school district, and of course the mayor. So looking at all the numbers tonight, looking at the possibilities of grants, and the fact that this is a thirty or fifteen year fix, I will be long gone before this school comes back up again in my, so I'm going to support this.
Plans on, if you have anything else you want to add?
No, I think we covered it.
Okay.
Appreciate all the work that the C I P did. It's, I think you took the charge of finding alternatives and some of the staff, the mayor, the boarders, and the no borders, and you know, the responsible, who had planned any different approach. Directing the list to the topic of budget. The project will come back up again in a minute, I think we talked about a lot earlier. So if you want to, you want to kind of lead the review of the budget, there's been a lot of, a lot of back and forth. There were a few advisory, citizens advisory, budget committee meetings, this draft report, there's, there's just a lot of activity around budget. So if you could kind of reset the table, that would be helpful.
I'd be happy to. So the administration has been working on budgets since October, and on this, again, give sort of a thirty thousand foot. When we started the process, we had a budget that came in at nine percent. We worked on that budget, cut that budget down to four percent, four point five, four point seven percent. That was the original budget that was shared with the A B C at our first meeting. At our second meeting, the administration continued to work on that budget. We brought back the budget with three, at three point five eight, thirteen million, one hundred thirty six, six twenty seven. What we did with this budget is, knowing that COVID's still here, we've taken COVID out of that budget to all, all the six classes, all the substitute teachers, and the substitute teachers, the teachers that aren't in ability every day, that are covering for teachers who are out for potential quarantine issues, or other, other issues that are causing them to get out of our ability, that allow us to continue to run day to day, face to face education. At that point, the A B C has gone through the three point five percent increase to the budget. They have, as you said, wrote a recommendation, draft report. I know that's still with the chair of the A B C. In, in that report, they talked about some of the backup for our, from our department heads, appreciating some of that backup. They talked about the continued efforts that the school board and town need to make to continue to work collaboratively together on issues that come up throughout the year. And I think we've talked about potentially setting a meeting, a more consistent standing meeting with the town and school board. And so at this point, we, again, we have the budget at three point five percent increase, and it had a tax impact of forty seven cents, or a five point nine percent increase to the tax rate. On our, after our December first, A B C meeting, the school board held a budget review session at that budget review session. Those minutes were approved on the December second meeting. You instructed the administration, Kelly and I, to go back in, to take a look at that budget, to see what else we potentially could do to get this budget under three percent. And so tonight, in front of you, you will see a twenty twenty one recommended budget reductions packet. In that packet, the top page, there are a list of the top lines, and the description and the amounts. We were able to go back into that budget, we were able to find eighty eight thousand, eight hundred eighty three dollars on each there, and reduced that budget to thirteen million, forty seven thousand, four hundred seven, four hundred forty four dollars for a two point eight eight percent increase. That's now an increase of thirty eight cents to the tax rate for a four point seven percent increase. Again, this is a, this is something that you asked me to do, so I'm bringing this here to you tonight. I would do so, try to get some lesson for you to allow me to continue to, to work, to start to present this budget to you for the January budget hearing. So again, we've given the A B C, they've done their work on three point five eight. We've reduced, I, I've reduced that based upon your, your charge to me and Kelly. We've, we're bringing back to you now two point eight eight. I would ask that, we feel this is a, a real tight budget. We, we thought it was tight at three point five eight. We've pulled our belts real tight. We've cut field trips, we've cut supplies, we've cut lots of things. We've reduced some hours. We've looked at staffing, we've been able to reduce staffing. Like we said, we're going to hopefully defray some things into some warrant articles for technology. We really have tried to take a hard look at that budget and get this thing under three percent to help potentially offset with maybe if it touches a warrant article, whether that's for a bracket or not. But knowing that typically in a budget in this community, has a, has a, has a better chance of success when it gets under three percent. And so I wanted to do that, wanted to be cognizant of all the things that may be coming, and cognizant of the taxpayers. We bring to you this budget now at two, two point eight eight percent increase. And again, I would ask that you allow me to continue to utilize this budget as I prepare the budget presentation for the January thirteenth budget hearing.
Last one, the board.
I guess just a question, the summer school reduction rest, can you just talk a little bit about how you're?
I sure can. So as things move so rapidly, we've had some information over the last four days, that some of that money, what that was allocated for, that there is, some people are moving out of this.
So is that the reason for the point six bed teacher?
Uh, the point six, the point six bed teacher was something within the budget of point two, so it was a four percent increase this year. Again, having conversations with the administration, rather being used for remote, we feel that we can pull that out because remote will look a whole lot different next year if we have to go in that direction. The other things on that list, and I'll, I'll load them because I know everyone has that, but the oil, Matt mentioned at the last meeting that we're at the lock-in oil at almost ninety cents lower than, we see about ninety eight cents at last year. Had a conversation with Matt, we're burning about twenty last gallons a day here with the controls and the new H V A C systems that we put into this building. So we think there's some substantial savings there coming into next year. So that's why we looked at those lines. The co-curricular line, we had not taken out, there was still eight thousand dollars in field trips that we did not pick up on, when we broke down, we saw that, we already removed our field trips, so that's why that eight thousand is there. The, the co-curricular supplies, there was some additional money that we had looked at, that Kelly and I both felt was enough money in that line to offset. We wouldn't be running potentially all the sports in another program. So again, some supply money there. Sa U salary, Kelly and I have determined that neither of us will take a salary increase next year. And then obviously, that hasn't happened quite often in New Hampshire time. So again, that eighty eight thousand, eight hundred eighty two dollars.
We're talking about the, the cost of oil we're trying to pay for next year, and there's things change. There are, it seems like certain parties go in, they're like ask, they're like, that happens like thousands of times, or?
We'll lock, we'll lock in.
So that's good for all next year.
You got a quote from the, on that quote, you said, if we want to lock in that quote, they'll honor that quote.
Well, uh, two eight eight, I think we should, I think we started at like nine something?
Nine seven.
A two eight eight is, is a good amount.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that there's an increase at all now is just due to factors beyond our control.
So Scott, thank you. I, I, I know the budget committee, you folks have heard this, but the, really, the increase to this budget outside of the third year of the teacher contract is New Hampshire retirement. And New Hampshire retirement is a hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars. The teachers are in forty five thousand dollars for employees. And so that's a legislative push down to the local districts. The local districts are picking up another two percent. And there's over two hundred thousand dollars, almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars of New Hampshire retirement costs that the district had to afford. Thank you, Scott.
And I think the other thing that, you know, we looked at a lot, especially at the beginning of our process, and of course, a couple months ago now, but I do feel that a factor for COVID related expenses, right? And, and that's part of the reason why it's started so high. But I think, you know, as a board, you know, we've taken a very conservative approach for the taxpayer. Most of that stuff, we have not included in the budget. Because we just don't know what will happen, and why put that burden on the taxpayer rate. And that's also, kind of speaks also to why we are very conservative with our revenue, our tuition revenue for our assets over here. So if things were to go the other way, you know, fifteen months from now, you know, we, we have the ability to deal with it. But in the meantime, we're not going to, you know, burden the taxpayers. We're trying to pay for expenses we may not have, you know, the other half. So I think it's important to point out, if the committee consider that as well.
Yeah, so you want to add something? So it's not a formal motion and second discussion and direction. This is significantly refined budget from where we started. Is the board comfortable with having Russ and Kelly continue with this to prepare for, for the January meeting, where basically it becomes our decision? Is this directionally correct? Concerns, questions, comments, support? It's not a formal thing?
I think with what we know right now, it's very disresponsible. A lot of it did drop off, so I'm in favor of that, if it's involved.
Okay, Gary?
Agreed.
Scott?
Agreed.
I agree as well.
I'll, I'll share this topic with the chair of the A B C tomorrow, so we, that's everybody share what this community is willing to, but again, they've done some great work on that three point five eight, and I feel that that point was pretty comprehensive.
Well, if you could give it to Kevin tomorrow, the, the binder we've used for the advisory is the same one these two boards have. So as long as there's anything new, he, he gets it for his committee. So they have a hundred percent of everything that we're looking at. We've kept that. So please, tomorrow, you get that. That's okay? Let's stay at a hundred percent. Okay, so you have your direction. Please continue on. War articles.
Do you want to continue?
Keep on rolling, we've got to warm up.
So on, again, on the table in front of you, there is a one pager, one inside. The C I P committee discussed what draft warrant article options may look like. At that point in time, when we were discussing it, they were discussing the option of one, which is to raise the sum of the ten point six gross budget. It goes through legal terms that were determined by bond counsel. Then that option two, then again, the consideration, we, by doing a signed conversation, was looking at the ten point six, and then also putting another article in place that if Article One failed at the ten point six, would the school enter into a fifteen year lease agreement to install the four point seven million dollars of the emergency saving infrastructure, including O E D, which involves H V A C and electrical supplies and safety. The C I P committee, if I'm correct, made a determination to go with option one, and just put forward, or recommended to the board, the ten point six gross budget for the comprehensive package.
That's correct.
And so on the back page, which isn't there, which again, was shared with the A B C, in the budget that is listed on the first article, is the three point five eight, so that has not been adjusted. The budget, the board for the budget at thirteen million, one thirty six, six point seven. The default budget, again, the sort of default budget sits there, the, the board gets to determine the final default budget. And then I will bring that to you in the January meeting, as we spoke to when you did the, did a vote on that. But we put a placeholder in there based upon what we thought that that might be, looking at the numbers. And then the second is to, the second warrant article is to authorize, until rescinded, to adopt the language of the N S I fund balance, to be held in accordance with R S A eighty nine four B two, which is a retention of any year fund balance, general fund, as apparently listed to not to exceed the amount to five percent under the fiscal year's net assessment, with correct language as stated in new legislation, R S A one eighty nine four, one B dot two. So again, what that does, you have a school contingency account currently right now, that it said two point five percent is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in that account. What this does, based upon the legislation, is allow you to go from two point five to five percent. It needs voter approval for that to happen. Then you allow, you're allowed to again take five percent or roughly five hundred thousand dollars, and leave that into your contingency fund, unreserved fund balance.
It does have so much garble, legal, legalese. I think it seemed to be helpful to the budget advisory group, was helpful for me, to get it restated, that, that, that isn't that, that two hundred plus thousand dollars that's in the contingency fund now. It's not something that we can just willy nilly decide as a board to, to spend, so taxpayers know that it's truly a contingency fund, and there's permissions.
The permissions are appearing to local systems.
That would have to happen. And all this does is accept, the voter will accept the states, allowing it to go from two and a half to five percent.
Right. Because you have a warrant article that was passed, I believe in two thousand and four, the original language is two point five, because of legislation you have, now we need to change the language to be updated to the five percent with the new language of R S A or whatever.
I think most communities have this, so.
Some do, some took advantage of it, some didn't. We were, we're still waiting for a specific language, but D R A, which should come away from that, and this is our supposed staff at that language. We're hoping D R A will have official language, and we'll make that available to you soon as we can. And then the last, based upon a conversation with the board, and at the A B C levels from the district, raise an appropriate sum of forty thousand dollars to replace in such, such funds into the fidelity capital reserve fund, which we've established, set some to come from the unreserved fund balance at year end of June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. There is currently fifty thousand dollars in the fund. And again, part of that thought process here, we knew there was some COVID issues, we went to one-on-one computing issue because of COVID issues. There's some expenses that we had taken out of the technology budget that potentially we will need to offset. We've been using the capital reserve money that's there. I thought was to also try to put some more in there, to not depletion, the, 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 the plea to that account, and to continue to add money to it, and if we needed to draw some off that. Again, the board has to have, have to vote on that, has to be approved by you, the board, for us to be able to shut that.
Hey, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when we talked about establishing this last year, it was because we knew that in a few years, we're going to have to do something with the network. It's going to be a lot more costly, is that right?
So there's, we, we might say, we have virtual servers, and we, there are eight, if I remember correctly, all those virtual servers, we need to start replacing them over the next couple of years. And there was two, so about eight thousand dollars to do that collectively at one time. Hopefully we can piece them up, if I remember correctly, two at a time. We're going from eight to four. If there was something, yes, in that line as well, I expect. And so those are the, the three warrant articles. Again, the project, at that point in time, we, I left that blank, so that would be your fourth, if you determine to take that draft option one for comprehensive plan. So the board right now would have four warrant articles, the tax impact, again, for the budget, Article One would be thirty eight cents. And then depending on, the, the gross, the comprehensive package at ten point six, right now, as it's listed, depending on that interest rate, is about eighteen cents for the first year. So I don't know if I can do the quick math in my head, but so that thirty eight, eighteen is, actually looking at that for a tax increase based upon the four warrant articles that you've proposed.
Last comments from the rest of the board? Anything, questions? Um, yeah, I wouldn't support the, the smaller one at first point. The, the option you considered at the last time, I personally wouldn't support it. I don't think it would reduce the funds and energy and disruption and tax dollars. So I don't support what we have.
There's one more piece if I could talk about the guy who just warned the budget, if you don't mind. So I know, just you attended the select board meeting virtually Monday, as well as I did. At that meeting, I had some correspondence prior to that meeting with Aaron Simpson, our moderator. He has indicated that he has a little bit of hesitancy with the in-person deliberative session. Again, in front of you, there's a packet of information that starts off with Health Bill eleven twenty nine, which gives towns the ability to hold sort of virtual deliberative sessions in annual town meetings and drive-through voting. There's legislation there, there is opinion from Drummond Woodson, and also the N H M A regarding how to go through those steps. I know the town had indicated it wasn't necessarily interested in looking in that direction, based upon the current sort of rate of COVID or the current exposure of COVID in this community. Obviously, that was to change. I think that everyone would have to relook at this. We, I talked to Matt, we feel that we could hold a hundred and seventy individuals, six feet apart from the Sherbert Gym, to hold an in-person deliberative session. What we're practicing here tonight is, is the way to stream that, so you can participate, excuse me, so that you can get watched at home, you know, get to participate, you can get to watch, you can hear the other community members who didn't want to come, but actually sit and listen. To actually participate, you would have to be in the room to be able to be recognized as a registered voter, and to cast votes and to make amendments if you chose to do so. I would, I would urge the board that we try to hold a in-person deliberative session. The town is responsible for the vote and march, and so that's completely their decision, or that's an in-person or a registered drive-up. Again, the town select board seem to lean in favor of trying to hold an in-person deliberative session, as well as a vote. Everyone probably needs to see what things look like in February or May, March, as they come along. One thing that, based upon Eric's comment, I'm not necessarily maybe feeling comfortable, the town mayor and I have been, administrator have been talking, and she brought up the idea that there can be deputy moderators. And so I have reached out to Jolene Johnson, Brian Donovan, and John Reed is trying to make a connection for me with George Kirk, to see if folks would be willing to, for, to get training. On January ninth, there's a training, that's virtual, from nine o'clock in the morning to two o'clock in the afternoon, that allows them to get trained as deputy moderators, where they could step in if Eric chose not to, to help us hold our deliberative session. So I'm trying to make sure that we're covered, if that's the direction which you should go in, if Eric doesn't feel safe, and we have some other people who said they'd be willing to, we just look at it, consider it, in the, in the potential to take part in that training to do, and build that board for us if it were to be locked. But I just wanted to put that on the table, and I think it's an important piece. This is a, this is a very odd year for lots of towns. I know folks, you remember, Hockington and Bo tried to, tried through, the, Hockton tried to pass the budget this year. Took, in sometime in August, they were finally able to school budget pass. There's a lot of nuances to having virtual meetings. And one of the biggest pieces to the virtual meeting is it saying that the first question to be asked, there are two hearings, the one that, that introduces sort of all the information, you wait seven days, you receive all the feedback, and then they go to vote. On the vote, it says, do you want to hold your virtual meetings this way, and voting this way? If you vote no, everything else on that ballot is null and void. It just goes away, it's done. And so it just, it adds a lot of potential complications to a process. And then one other thing that's important to recognize, we made a commitment to bring four hundred students and a hundred and twenty adults together, and we've been doing it for sixteen plus, almost seventy days now, doing that successfully. I hope that the community can be supportive, and feel that they can come to the deliberative session. Last year was probably the largest deliberative session we had. We had about a hundred and seventy people. There were probably about forty students that were in the room that weren't registered voters, and it didn't necessarily, it was great to have them there, but don't necessarily need to be there. We also think that people that will show up, may come in couples, and we can take rows, maybe two or three rows, and put a couple seats, and then the bleachers down at Sherbert Gym, put the family. So if you have family of five, you come in, we'll give you a row. We can social distance. So actually, we think we can actually fit more than, I don't exactly people, because not everyone's going to come down there to do it.
It'd be amazing if we had the crowd with last year, whether without COVID, with what we're, what's on the box this year. So with COVID, I don't see it. The select board meeting was really helpful for me personally, to hear the discussion. Josh and I, Josh, the chair and I talked before, and we've been talking more often. But I, it was helpful to have here, the town administrator work through that discussion. So I'm personally, I, you know, I was thinking that the online is quite alienating, of some people having other people be addressed and included more effectively for that online style. I, I, I personally want to follow the tendency to try to have a person with effective streaming. I appreciate John Reed and the resources here tonight to give this a try, because I thought as a taxpayer, I mean, I want to have a selfish interest, because I want some insight on how to bring back to you guys your suggestions, your ideas to the town, ideas. But just as a taxpayer, they do a nice, they do a nice job with their meetings, listening in, and know, I mean, a lot of the times, people won't listen, and they don't necessarily want to participate. So we can have a safe environment. Wild unknowns until, what is it, February twelve, or first, February second, sorry, January first, or something like that. So the world could change, it's changed a lot. Couple meetings ago, we were talking about vaccines, and now there are the, the people in the interest, so who knows? But at this point, I would like to, I'd like to follow the model town was considering, staying in touch with them closely on meeting format and those things. But I do think the proper spacing, masks, if again, we don't have to decide, and I, I'd love you to think about it, and do your own research, talk to, talk to other people. But I think what they're trying to do is a little very difficult, it's the right thing to do, and if we need to make it, we can push through, we can certainly discuss and plan for that. But I'd like to stay for the in-person vigilant spacing masks and care, and then effective streaming, that's what I got out of that meeting, so, from that. Lots of.
So I, I guess, first question is, are there state limitations on how many you could gather in the room? None? We'd have plenty of people to.
Just the mask mandate.
Mask mandate.
That's it. Okay. And then, is there a possibility of limiting the number of people that come in person, that needs first come to serve, and some means of doing that, but?
So I think there's a couple of questions that I would ask, would be, like, what happens if I got three hundred people and I only have a hundred and seventy seats? Do we have the option or the ability to hold one one night and one on another night, and you can either come to one or the other, with a moderator that's taking, calculating votes? I don't know the legality of how that potentially would work, or if we could do that. And it might be a situation where the moderator maybe has the ability to make that determination.
There's a webinar tomorrow about.
From the School Board Association, on how to run a successful meeting in COVID.
Yeah, had a, COVID nineteen, and there's a live Q and A, so I was going to do it, I'm going to attend that. And I'll send any content or anything to the board, and I was going to send it to the select board to see if it was helpful to them as well. And I'll send any content or anything to the board. And I was going to send it to the select board to see if it was helpful to them as well. So hopefully you can get some ideas tomorrow.
So what I struggle to get my head around is we've not allowed any fans in the gym to watch kids play sports, not even families. Students only, but we can put all these people in one room?
Well, we kept fans out of our gym because we didn't want our students in our community populated at the same time. We have the ability. We'd have to do it anyhow because the town is going to hold their meetings the next day. We have the ability to go in and with our equipment, our lights and our sprays, disinfect that gym once we step out of it that night. And we leave it till the next day till the town steps in, and we do the next, we do the same thing for the next day where we take it back over as a gym. The problem was the repetitiveness of doing that, the timing of doing that. It's just not cost effective to do it for sixteen basketball games or thirty-two basketball games because of the home game.
The online option, which is what I was leaning towards, sounds just like an enormous disaster. So I can understand why.
No, I mean, I guess I would prefer to see what we can do to be creative and do it in person, but not with two hundred people sitting around me there. That feels irresponsible to me.
Right. I, to be unfiltered, I can't imagine, there's nineteen of us in this room, I think, tonight. I can't imagine that you get much more than two or three times that. Again, away from last year's, you know, I guess controversial project and a lot of forums and a lot of momentum and a lot of buildup. We did have, I think it was thirty or forty kids, I think you mentioned that. So, you know, voters in the room, we probably had a hundred and thirty. Unless I'm missing something, you know, without COVID consideration, there isn't anything, there's no buildup, there's no animosities. There's some people don't want to see any taxes involved. That's different. But the project we bring to the board, not the deals, not the twenty-four million, all of that. Without COVID, I would, I just personally, definitely wouldn't get a hundred people on it. You know, and throw COVID in and have the streaming option, which is what we have before. I'd be, I'd be personally, public record, pretty surprised if that project was going to be able to play a lot more than that. I'm one opinion, not a scientist, not a volunteer, and that's how I'm trying to look at it. I'm trying to get my head around this and what's thinking about it through the select board meeting as we do.
Well, maybe if you have the opportunity to ask questions tomorrow, you can ask if you're allowed to, and like, can you limit to one household? Or are there things you could do?
Yeah.
To better manage it?
Yeah. There should be a deck, and I'll take notes of fact, then there's no opinion. I can chair it again, and then I'll put this left for. Hopefully, we can have a productive discussion over the next couple of months and figure out the best path. There's no good option. There are no comfortable options. How are we to have the oxy function and, you know, voter engagement? How are we critical to the process in this completely new area? Please.
Just the thought that other organizations have used is have a reservation. So then you know, I really only worry about fifty people or how many people are attending the town. So I think that's something other churches and other places have used to sort of age your crowd, being what we're talking about. So it's not a surprise that that many. And you don't necessarily eliminate people that don't have a reservation, but it just allows you to get that gauge.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
In, in the area, I'm worried, so it's not, we would be able to.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Yeah, there'll be, there'll be more discussion. Just like that, I would like that thought, do you possibly need to put out on the side of the reservations? For people to be at such and such dot org. I don't think it's out of the webinar now you have to make reservations to speak. Yeah. Well, I don't think it's too much to ask.
So I think one of the things that maybe reservations are registered. So you would ask people who registered for the meeting, which will allow us sort of an indication, as Mikan said, hey, we had a hundred people that wanted to register. Great. That means we haven't made another seventy seats of people who's walking out the street. Other than we had three hundred people register, and what are we going to do?
Well, also is going to happen, I think, if there's two hundred people in the gym, I'm not going to want to go. I will go, but I'm not going to want to go. So the average person who has interest or maybe wants to speak sees that there's fifty people expected, so maybe an extra twenty would just show up. They're going to be able to make a more reasonable decision to attend or not. So I think though, just some steps like that can be, we can borrow what's working around us and easily adopt it. And then we can present something that's at least more comfortable for voters to consider. So thanks for that.
I guess while we're talking about town deliberative too, well, I mean, I suppose if it's not going to be Aaron Simpson, then maybe it's not valid. But is there a possibility to get him to present or speak to the board on just kind of the order of operations and things like that? I know that there was some concern last year about whether or not people are allowed to come up in and present things or not present things. And it would be good to know what the rules are because I don't know.
Yeah. And again, from watching the other night, I totally respect that he didn't want to come to one of our meetings either at this point. So if he could, we could, if we could zoom him in, or he could just give us some guidelines, whatever, you know, he's a reasonable guy to talk to, whatever works. But I think that that would be to make it a standard yearly part of the board when all of us are not, we're no longer on the board. I can see that just being like a standard practice, like planning meetings when we recalibrate the new board. Planning two meetings a year at the select board as we start the year as a norm. This kind of thing could be a normal sort of process improvement. So I'd love to, let's try it if you can reach out to him and figure out the best way to do it. But I also think it helps inform, for sure helps us, but it also informs the public.
Well, everybody, because it caused a fuss in the meeting, and I don't think we should be seeing that in a formal meeting situation.
Yeah, that was unpleasant and unfortunate. So we can all have clarity. We can all have success. Yep, that's a great suggestion.
I can see if he's available for our January meeting.
Okay. That is.
They do an article.
Yeah, the advisory. I was just trying to think, is there anything else? That's it on warrants and budget. I think that's all. Okay, last stop, presentation and discussion. So we had the, the quick recap with a lot of mutual suspects or trouble that I'll notice. There was a petition warrant, Article Eight, that school board considered. Alternatives to Black Golden Project, we had redistricting, whatever worries the public. But there were not violent petition warrants. The board chose to draft guidelines for creating that tie. Working with, I worked a lot with the Mayor's School Board Association attorney, Will, who was very generous. It is not a common thing in the answer to have these kinds of committees. The board agreed to do so. Eric had volunteered to try to help support that and make it happen. And by the guidelines, just looking back at them, that they presented it for the full board on the October twenty, twenty school board meeting. So they would meet, form, make their recommendations, present, but again, well, that didn't happen. Meant well with the guidelines, but the COVID impacted things. We got a light start. They, I was expecting two or three meetings. They had, I don't know, a dozen or more. So their work along the way, what they shared, their challenges, challenging us directly, challenging me directly a couple of times. That whole process, I thought was valuable. And like Scott was, I'm reflecting on their contributions last week, two weeks ago. I was thinking about it a lot as well, and I was really pleased that a mix of the nine people, it was an open, positive community. And everybody volunteered, was included, and that mix came to unanimous, gave well. And had some favorability towards the current project that we're, we're in favor of. So it felt, it felt like a really great exercise, and they were generous with their time and they're appreciative. At the same time, their work was to present to us their report, and then that's it. So I just want to make sure the board that that was everybody's understanding, and that's how we want to look for, I'd like to hear comments from you. So mostly, I want to finish with a thank you to Mike for being the chair, Chris, Kevin, all the other participants on the committee, and thank them for serving their community and taking your risk and doing something different. Because I think there are a lot of, there's a lot of positive that's been out of it. But I just want to make sure we're clear and sending a clear message to them on hopefully appreciation, but also that that closes up the work. So thoughts from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I think from, I guess a couple of things that I'd like to just kind of give some feedback on based on being able to marinate a little bit over the last couple of weeks. Touched a couple of weeks ago on the desire and the agreement that we should pursue some revenue generating opportunities to look for tuition students that maybe could join our district and help with that piece of it. Also, you know, I'm more than willing, it sounds like we've already initiated this to be, have seen it taken to town. I think that would be a worthwhile exercise. And I know, John, you've had some ideas about that, so maybe that's something you could help us navigate to bring the town together as a representative of the board's election, if you're interested in doing that. But I think that would be worth us having a seat at the table, be part of those discussions. So I think there was some good recommendations that can be presented.
Yeah, I think it was an interesting adventure for everybody, and everyone took their risk. And I think some real good came out of it. I wouldn't be a little surprised if it was a little nervousy, but I do think some good came out of it. And I do think beyond, beyond the committee, John had some really good ideas about alternative revenue. So I think that's considered, the committee's nudging us, challenging us to have a much more focused effort for maybe some of the Goshen students, maybe the other students, those kinds of things. So I think it was, I think I have the potential in the future to do other, to community part of it, I think. Going up to the goal, I think, between what we have on our plate and also trying to work more closely with the town. And now is the time to start moving on. But I think when we have the board in March, starting, I think it's something we should talk about. We have, we all learned a lot through it, and it gives us, whatever it looks like and whatever the target is for getting the community assistance. I think it's, I think it's something that the draft board in March should talk about. I'll bring up what's going on, and I'll agree with that. Andy, Ed, Scott, thoughts on the committee?
No, I thought, I thought it gave us some great insight. I mean, one of the most interesting things that I heard is that they're, it was unanimous that they want to keep pre-K through the twelfth. And South Bay, which was, which was really interesting because there was a lot of people that thought that going regional was a solution without a solution. And I was pleasantly surprised to hear that for our South Bay students. And some of the other ideas that they came up with were very valid, and they put a lot of time in and thanked everybody that did it.
You don't have to say anybody, it's one of you guys saying stuff like that.
No, I mean, I reflected before how valuable it was for me. And I really have, obviously, you know, spent a lot of time the last two weeks reflecting on it. You know, I agree with some things, I disagree with others, but it was, again, right, just in that, it was very valuable. And I think, you know, there'll be offshoot opportunities, as Jesse indicated, after, you know, March. You know, hopefully at some point, there'll be something, you know, with the town and the district, maybe involve an athletic field. Project passes, obviously, there's going to be a lot of work to be done, but certainly staff, parents are the matter. I agree, you know, collaborating, find who, you know, what's actually going to happen at the site, you know, renovating and adding facilities, so, yeah, you have the revenue and tuition piece. So I think moving forward, you know, there'll be an opportunity to use this as a spring more to, you know, have broader participation, you know, from community members and various aspects as we move forward.
Okay. So thank you to, thank you to the committee, thanks Mike for chairing it and going through that whole process. And your report was good.
Can I just be clear? So our job is done. I know we said we would continue to stay on the level we want. But you're saying that this, that, that could be done, but we're all done, so I can send that to the community and we're not having anything else.
Yeah, and that's how it looked at, I remember when that was the plan. But at the same time, I think it was about the success that we can look at, you can keep talking to each other and figuring out what's a good way to. I'm pretty confident the committee itself, the one that was happening, has done a little differently. And I think the board would then, I know I've benefited from having had some different areas in front of it. So there's some room to figure that out together over time. And then we look at some other Article Eight, we're talking about new articles tonight. So if we're going to forward, it also is to continue on with another article from last, you know, an online one from last year. But I do see an overall positive and an opportunity to figure out another way to leverage the community, going to totally engage more people in participation.
Just to reference that, you know, you have a policy, ECF, the advisory committee before. And in that policy, this policy still, still, but you was awarded the right to appoint committees if you feel necessary for advisory purposes, give them the sort of charge, their period of time, and what it is that you request in front of them. So I think the policy allows you, you know, do a policy, ECF, if you're liable to be ghosted.
Yeah, I think they exceeded, certainly exceeded my expectations. And so I think the policy is more, I've been thinking, future potential. They were given an assignment that had a big impact on the board, which we wouldn't have some of the challenges and some of the disagreements and some of the agreements without that, the work of the nine. So it was a good thing. So thank you all again for that. Superintendent update?
I've been very brief. We, we have a remote day tomorrow, so Sean mentioned, or Womack mentioned, we do have a snow day. We took advantage of knowing the pending storm and that we're going to be looking at a snow day. So give it here, an opportunity to look at our one-day-remote situation and sort of put that to the test. So teachers were made aware of that about seven thirty this morning. Families got communicated out about three thirty this afternoon, and it was on, and you are right now is a remote day. So all students will need to go into the school classroom for assignments that were brought on tonight. Pick up those assignments, complete those assignments, and have those ready for the teachers on Friday when they return to school. All teachers will be available from PAM to two PM for any students. I know Tara has set up some individual things for students on IAT, our educators, and people have responsibilities and assignments tomorrow. So great opportunity for us to try out one-day-remote going into the winter. We don't lose a day because of the snowstorm, and we're a day closer to June. So that's one piece, the second piece is, again, doing a lot of work with Donna over the last couple of weeks regarding whether it's deliberative session, whether it's looking at the road, looking at, just having lots of conversations. Donna and I have actually talked a little bit about setting tax rate at the last meeting. You folks asked me, I said, would you mind if I went and see if we can bring somebody in to talk about tax rate? I spoke with our assess on Kristen McAllister, because COVID and some other things, she didn't feel comfortable necessarily coming. She did send me a short video that another community has viewed. She was trying to get it personalized to some of me. But it was actually really informative. It was probably only two or three minutes, so maybe we can show that in the book before the budget hearing. And Donna said, Donna gave me her PowerPoint from last year and how she calculates the tax rate. But maybe I can have Donna and Kathy talk a little bit more. Donna really focused it on the town, did have the school portion in that, so did the overall tax rate. So I'm still working on that, but it's a bit nice to just collaborate with Donna on a few of these different things moving forward. And the last piece is just working with John Reed right now on communication sort of plans of how we're going to communicate in this time of COVID. Deliberative sessions coming up, our budget, our bond hearings, budget hearings, and how we get the information out. And that's, that's real succinct and exciting to people in a way that they can pick rap that. And it's not always by our website, although it's a great place to send people. We're using our social media accounts and perhaps some newspapers. But we're trying to figure out the best way to get things out for people in a COVID situation so they can access information and have accurate information that's in front of them from schools.
Is your approach that we can do this for all facilities to get help from?
So we, we could, we actually have the right, the right to do that. Uh, so we, we could, we actually have the right, the right to do that. Um, I did promise in my email today that I will try to find a snow day, because, again, the predictability of this day is easy. Uh, trying to do this at five-thirty in the morning, that might have been a little more challenge. So I, I don't think we won't have any snow days, that's not, to me, that's the guy who stays on the weather. Uh, but with the predictability of storms, if we can do this, we certainly would take the opportunity to do it. Try to get the control there.
Yeah, it's not, you have a district that lives on M U R, superintendent, like, listen, there are kids, go be outside, go play. I'm like, oh, kids in Sunday are gonna hate this. All right, um, action items, we have one. Uh, look for a motion to approve the proposed project from E I. This is, the asterisk on this is, this is the project that's continuing to be refined in C I P, the project board, for consideration to the next. This is not final dollars, final exact dollars for the, um, the warrants, budget, and all of those others. So, we can go with the ten point six, right?
So you're, you're voting to support the E I project at ten million, six hundred and five dollars, six five hundred and sixty-five?
I didn't have the extra, the extra, the ten point six is what I was, is that?
Ten points of comprehensive package, is that important?
The best from, yep, okay, so to, just to make sure the context, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna play it over. I look for a motion to approve the proposed comprehensive E I project at ten point six million dollars. Make a motion to approve the E I grant offer, the project, which is at ten point six million dollars. A second for discussion.
One second.
Thank you for the second, Ed. We've already talked about this for about forty-five minutes, so without replaying everything I already said, are there additional comments, concerns, excitement?
Just is there anything else you need from us at this time, Russ, as far as moving the building aid forward?
This is the final piece, this is the final, we saw that.
Having this supported keeps us in, moves that movement, building support, some base. Since we're in discussion, I wanna make a personal point. There's different feelings about wood boilers, propane boilers. I look to you for the recommendation, or the experts at E I for recommendation, I personally don't care, because I don't want, there's merit stipulations. You can cut the trees down here, or you can build a boiler somewhere else, you can give it all that later.
Give you the five-minute overview, though, not even, one minute. If we go with the wood chip boiler system, the difference, if we, and we'll apply for a grant, which will bring the cost of it down significantly, probably gonna get about two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, E I is fairly confident that we'll get that, that will supply the shirt in elementary school, and it's actually a five-year payback, where it starts paying us money. And then also, there's a, right now, the state in New Hampshire, because they wanna make this a renewable fuel source for the state, the state will actually give us another additional, I think it was forty thousand dollars, roughly?
Wait, so the total, the total between electricity was about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it was about forty thousand?
I think the, I, I, don't quote the number, but the state actually refunds us some money to use wood chips every year. So it's not a long-term payback, if we take that out, believe it or not, and you take all the, uh, the, uh, the grant money out, it's only about a hundred thousand dollars taken. So it doesn't really make sense to not go for it. That's a decision we can make later down the road, if we don't get the grant, we can say, okay, it's prudent not to put the wood boiler in, because we didn't get the two hundred thousand dollars. You know, but right now, it, it just makes sense, because it's, it's only a five-year payback, so four steps maybe like.
Yeah, and I'm not making light of it, there's, there's a couple of people happy about the boilers, and so I just wanna make sure in discussion and public meeting and in the record that, um, that isn't something that needs to be decided. Oh, no, 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 it actually doesn't need to be decided before the warrant article, but it's the, it's being, last meeting, we gave E I permission to go ahead and start, prepare for the grant. This with the warrant, I mean, with the ten point six, kind of, it's a, we could stay in tune with getting a little bit of money, sort of doing that, Mark. I just wanted to address the wood boiler.
Yeah, it, it's not, it's not etched in stone by any means. We, if we decide, you know, down the road, this does not make sense, and it didn't get the grant, then we can change that.
Okay, there's that in discussion, I'd be helpful, so that would be much more effective with, uh, the negative, so thank you for the rescue, I appreciate it. So, any other discussion?
I think, I think just the point of clarity that, all things considered, the cost differential is a hundred thousand dollars. With an ROI that's five years, or potentially even less than that, and once we achieve our, our, our O I, we're, we're making money, or saving money.
I hope we are having a good discussion. Um, all in favor of approving the comprehensive, uh, project plan from E I for ten point six million dollars? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Manus, thank you. Um, Scott, you wanna show off again the eighteen manifest and bring us on home? Nice and easy, I have a lot of notes.
Is there only one?
There's only one.
I gotta get back to that.
There'll be a layout for you, right?
Okay, well, I will move to approve eighteen manifest twenty twenty-one dash eleven for a hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents.
Oh, second. Okay, for the second one, I know, any discussion, question? All right, all in favor of approving the eighteen manifest twenty twenty-one dash eleven as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, no payroll manifest, public forum, uh, same thing, intended as hearing, your direct opinion from Andy. Three minutes to go over and take time from other people. Looking for Mike, Axton, signals first.
Would you say that's first?
You are, you were quicker to draw it down.
So I do have a lot mixed feelings, with my, how do we put into doing this, hopefully, I started back in whatever day it was. I listened to your comments up here tonight, I agree with some of them. And, uh, Scott, you did rear the heads, they'll be up to the taxpayers, they're gonna have the chance to say yes or no. So that's at least a democracy I'm, I'm looking forward to. Ed, you and I are probably on the same page about with school choice and voucher system. I think you have a serious potential to get more students to come to Sonopie, and that was one of the reasons I felt we should be waiting to see what we're gonna get with the new education system, because you may have to put an addition on this building or building of school, but I think if you go forward with eleven million dollars, that's gonna go out the window. I know we had some other options out there with the Irish company, you guys didn't wanna look at it, that was another reason why we said wait a year, because they were coming in about two million dollars less than what the proposal was. And, um, I guess, I think it was you and Andy I can't remember, what do you guys said, there's gonna be some give and take? And, and I agree a hundred percent with that, but I also feel that, um, like last year, I thought you went all in just on the whole project and didn't split it up. Um, I'm not in favor of spending four point five million, but I'm also not in favor of spending the eleven million. I'm in favor of spending much more to build a new school if we have to. But by not asking the voters, if this does not pass, would you be in favor of spending five million? You're never gonna know what they're willing to spend, and if it fails, you're back to square one, we've been for the last, since two thousand and four. So I would think that you may wanna reconsider at least that part, because we, we did when our committee started. How much are they willing to spend? How do we find that out? You have an opportunity with this warrant out going out there, to ask eleven million, and say the school board, you know, supports this, but if the town doesn't, do you support this? So it'll be two warrants, you'll know at least from there, and I'm sure, I'll guarantee you, there's.